I'd like to call the order of the regular city council meeting of Monday, September 27, 2010 with a roll call, please.
Mayor Martini.
Here.
City Clerk Patterson here. Council members Ratty.
Here.
Salerno.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Kerrigan, absent. Schmidt.
Here.
City Manager Carey.
Here.
City Attorney Adams.
Here.
Okay, if you'd all stand for the invocation, we again this week are very pleased to have with us Pastor Barb West of the Sparks Church of the Nazarene. She's becoming our own personal pastor, so thank you Barb for being here.
Thank you very much for the invitation. The Bible says that "A blessed is the nation whose God is the Lord." And it also tells us that we need to pray for our governing officials, so if you'll bow your heads with me, we'll pray. Our heavenly Father, we just want to thank you for the dawning of another gorgeous day and for all of the things that we here at Sparks have accomplished all summer long. Thank you for all of the activities and all of the beautifications and the street repairs and just so many things that we're thankful for. And we are so thankful for this governing body, the City of Sparks officials that preside over us and help us, and we pray that today that they would make godly decisions on all of the things on the docket before them. Thank you for Mayor Martini and for his leadership, and thank you for each and every member of the council. Lord, would you be with them today as they conduct this meeting and be with all of us as we honor you. We are so thankful that we are Americans and we have the freedom to pray over these meetings and for our leaders. Hear our prayer now in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Thank you Pastor West. If you'd remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance, Mr. Schmidt, would you lead us?
Please join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next is comments for the public. I have no speaking cards. Anyone want to speak under comments from the public? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to approval of the agenda. And I need to make a little note here. Item 7-1, 7-2, and 7-3 were noticed, they're public hearings and they were noticed for a three o'clock meeting, so we'll have to, if we've not, if we've finished up before then, we'll go to redevelopment and finish that up, and then we'll come back at three o'clock and do 7-1, 7-2, and 7-3, so. Approval of the agenda, anybody want to take anything out of order? If not, looking for a motion. Mr. Schmidt.
Move to approve.
Do you have a second? Mr. Schmidt.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Smith, seconded by Councilman Schmidt to approve the agendas outlined by staff. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passage unanimously. Okay, next, a recommendation to approve minutes of the regular meeting of September 13, 2010. Any additions or corrections? If not, looking for a motion. Ms. Ratty.
Move to approve.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman Ratty, seconded by Councilman Smith to approve the minutes of September 13, 2010. Any additional comments? Questions? Seeing none, please vote. Passage unanimously. Next is presentations. Presentation, "Secret Witness: Recognition of Police Chief Steve Kiefer." I think we have Ken Lightfoot and Catherine Louden here to make a presentation, and Mr. Kiefer, if you'd come up. Now, I've got a letter here from Secret Witness, but I'm sure you're going to go over all this stuff, so we'll make sure that we enter this into the record.
Thank you.
Well, Mayor Martini and members of the council, my name's Ken Lightfoot. I'm a member of the Board of Directors for Secret Witness. We know that you're aware that you've got a pretty special person as your police chief, but one of the things we want to do today is make sure you're aware of how special he As you know, Secret Witness has been around a while and done a lot to help solve many, many crimes. We are, in the process for two years, we've been trying to figure out a way, develop a way, that people can use their cellphones to anonymously text in messages, and Chief Kiefer has really stepped up and gone the extra mile to help this, help us accomplish this. I want to introduce Catherine Louden with me. She's our chairman of the Board of Directors of Secret Witness. I don't know if I should tell you this, but she just confessed a few minutes ago to me that Julia was her roommate at my hall about 10 years ago.
Yeah, just 10, and just 10 years ago. This, Mayor Martini and members of the Sparks City Council, this is really important for us, for you to understand the impact that Chief Kiefer has had on our entire northern Nevada community. And I would very much like to read this letter into the record because what is happening for northern Nevada Secret Witness has been just absolutely amazing. So, as Ken Lightfoot mentioned, who is the vice chairman of Secret Witness of Northern Nevada, Secret Witness has been around for 31 years, and we have received much support and cooperation and collaboration from the Sparks City Council. We have been looking for over two years for a texting community-wide in all of northern Nevada anonymous Secret Witness program. Several months ago, Chief Steve Kiefer became aware of our search. He invited Secret Witness to a meeting with representatives from the police department to discuss our texting needs, and he pulled together all of the areas, or agencies in our area and their chiefs. He discussed these issues. The result of the meeting was a commitment to try to find a mutually beneficial answer to our search for the viable texting program, and through Chief Kiefer's leadership and dedication to seeking community-wide solutions, we were able to develop an anonymous texting program that's unique to our needs here in northern Nevada. As far as we know, no such program has ever been attempted anywhere else in the country using this innovative configuration through a Secret Witness or a Crime Stopper organization. The new anonymous Secret Witness texting program will debut in just a few weeks. This service that will benefit many communities throughout northern Nevada would not have been possible without the leadership and dedication of Chief Steve Kiefer. We are exceedingly grateful to him on the behalf of Secret Witness of Northern Nevada for his efforts and his leadership. This City of Sparks should be very proud to have such a high-quality person serving all of the residents, and I just wanted to say thank you so much to you and also to all of you, because we may have been searching for this, you know, a couple of years from now, had it not been for Chief Kiefer, so thanks for everything that you've done.
Well, I didn't do that much. Our department ended up purchasing this product, and it started the ball rolling, working with a great group of people, the Board of Secret Witness and other department heads got this going. Secret Witness is so powerful, doesn't work all the time, but there's so many successful stories where investigations would be at a dead end if it wasn't for Secret Witness that has such a reputation. So to put texting on it seemed like the logical thing to do, and it's going to be very powerful once we get the message outright, so it was my honor to work with you, and thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks to Secret Witness, and thank you, Chief. I always talk about the Sparks Police Department and promoting from within, and I think this is a classic example of why we promote from within, because people that have come up through the ranks like yourself know our community, knows what our community needs, and when we promote somebody from within, we always get a good product, so. Thanks so much for all you do, and thank you so much for Secret Witness and recognizing Chief Kiefer. Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, next is a proclamation for Fire Prevention Week. It's here somewhere, I promise you. Okay, "Whereas the City of Sparks is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in and visiting our city, and whereas nearly 3,000 people die each year as a result of home fires, approximately two-thirds of those deaths occur in residents with no smoke alarms or no working smoke alarms, and working smoke alarms cut the chance of dying in a fire in half. And whereas the National Fire Protection Association recommends at least one smoke alarm on every level of the home, including the basement, outside all sleeping areas, and in all bedrooms, and whereas informing the public about the importance of smoke alarm installation and maintenance is an essential step towards increasing the public safety from home fires. And whereas the 2010 Fire Prevention Week theme, 'Smoke Alarms: A Sound You Can Live With, You Can Life With,' is that right? Life with or live with? Okay. Just reading what it says. actively works to motivate residents to implement smoke alarm recommendations in their homes. Now therefore I, Gino, our Martini Mayor of the City of Sparks, Nevada, do hereby proclaim October 3 through the 9, 2010, Fire Prevention Week and urge everyone to protect their homes and families by heeding the potentially life-saving messages of Fire Prevention Week 2010 and to support the many activities and efforts in the City of Sparks Fire and Emergency Services. Thanks Bob for all you do, appreciate it." Go ahead, you got anything that you want to talk about?
Sure. Yes, thank you. We have already pretty much kicked off Fire Prevention Week. It does start in October, but we kicked it off this last weekend with our big Pancake Breakfast open house. It was our 21st. Kind of hard to call it annual because we didn't do it last year, so it was our 21st, though.
It is annual.
Okay, and it'll be back next year again.
Yeah.
But one of the main reasons we do Pancake Breakfast, Open House, not just for to kick off Fire Prevention Week, but also just to bring the public into our fire station and show them all the different services that we do for the community and educate them. Show them them and let them tour through the fire station and see everything we do. That's one of our main intents of it is. We actually made around $1,800 for this event, and what we're going to use those funds for is to go right back to the community by buying fire prevention paraphernalia for the schools and businesses, as well as we'll put some money in our Victims for Fire Fund for people that do suffer the loss of a fire in their house, and we like to get them back on their feet again with some clothes and items that they need right away. I would like to just publicly thank the businesses out there that supported us this year. It was just tremendous. We hardly had to buy anything out of our own funds, and it's just amazing in this economic time that they'll do that. I mean, that just really shows that they do support us. But I'd really like to thank the businesses, as well as all the volunteers that came and helped out at the Pancake Breakfast. It's really appreciated a lot.
Thanks Bob, it's a fun time. It was good, a lot of people around, and it went very smoothly, I thought, so.
It did. It was, we served, we believe around 400 people, a little slower this year, but contributed probably to a very, very nice weekend. They were probably out and about, plus we had a few other events going on as well. But for Fire Prevention Week itself, you've heard about our Project Safe Residential Smoke Alarm Program. On October 9, we'll be back out in the community all day long in the one big section of town that we have selected, installing smoke alarms throughout the houses out there. We'll be sending out a media release also, so they can come out and join us and see what we're doing.
And I think I'm happy to report that we passed muster with the Washoe County Board of Health again this year?
Yes, we did.
Okay, good. Sometimes you never know what's going to happen with those inspections going on. Okay, proclamation, official day of recognition for firefighters who have died in the line of duty. Whereas the United States Congress and the President have designated the day of the annual National Fallen Firefighter Memorial Service as a day to honor firefighters and the American flag on all federal buildings to be at half-staff, whereas an average of 100 firefighters courageously make the ultimate sacrifice in the line of duty each year. And whereas the events of September 11, 2001 brought national attention to the duties, responsibilities, hazards, and sacrifices faced by fire and emergency personnel on a daily basis. And whereas firefighters and emergency services personnel play an essential role in the protection of lives and property in our community. Now therefore I, Gino, our Martini Mayor of the City of Sparks, Nevada, call upon all residents and all patriotic civic and educational organizations to observe October 3, 2010 in recognition of the patriotic service and dedicated efforts of our fire and emergency services personnel by lowering American flags on all buildings to half-staff. I encourage appropriate services and ceremonies to honor fire and emergency services personnel, past and present, who by their faithful and loyal devotion to duties have rendered invaluable service to our community and its citizens. I further call upon the residents of Sparks to remember all fire and emergency personnel who have made the ultimate sacrifice and service to their community and to pay respect to the survivors of our fallen heroes. Thanks Bob. Thanks Bob for being here to accept that, and thanks to all the firefighters, not only here but everywhere. Okay, next is a commendation to Sherri Flynn, Systems Development Administrator. Come on up. Welcome. City of Sparks commendation. Whereas Sherri M. Flynn competed against nominees from across the United States and was selected as the 2010 GMIS International Outstanding Professional. And whereas for 25 years, the Outstanding Professional Award has recognized information technology professionals whose meritorious performance is representative of service, delivery, excellence in the public sector. And whereas Sherri was selected because of her achievements during a 10-year career with the City of Sparks Information Technology Division. And whereas these achievements include work, major work accomplishments, education, honors, awards, recognition, and outstanding community activities. And whereas Sherri is the first recipient of this honor for any agency in the state of Nevada. Congratulations. Now therefore I, Gino, our Martini Mayor of the City of Sparks, Nevada, join with the city council in commending Sherri Flynn for achieving this distinction. Congratulations Sherri.
Thank you.
Yes, if I could interject real quickly, and then we'll move to the honoree of the day. Rick Berreiter, IT Manager, wanted to highlight a couple of the things that I felt led to her choosingness for this honor. Sherri is always, well, first off, I'm proud that our organization and one of our good employees is recognized with a national honor of this sort. And Mayor Martini, you may recollect, a couple of years ago, you opened up our national conference at the Nugget for GMIS, so I'm sure that had some play in our eventual victory. But a couple of things that Sherri's done in recent times that I think really played a role in her selection. On her own volition, a couple of years ago, she put together a presentation in a display booth for Dilworth Middle School for their Junior Achievement Day, and it was targeted to try to inspire young women into entering into the information technology field. As you may know, a lot of people aren't choosing information technology, figuring it's an overseas-type thing, and it's particularly true with young women, so I was very proud that Sherri did that. Secondarily, she was our project manager for the implementation of the Aggressive Financial Software, which we brought up a major portion of it last December, on time, within budget, and went quite well, so now we've tasked her with Phase Two, which is the payroll personnel. So I'll turn the microphone over to Sherri.
Go ahead Sherri.
Oh, I just wanted to say it's been an amazing 10 years. I never thought I would find myself working for government, but it's proven to be challenging and growth opportunities at every single turn, and a great bunch of people to be working with.
Great, and we're certainly proud of you, and you bring a lot of distinction to the City of Sparks, and we appreciate that Sherri, thanks.
You're welcome.
And it starts right at the top, doesn't it Sherri?
It helps.
And you as well.
Thank you.
All right, thanks. Okay, let's move on to consent items. Anybody want to pull a consent item 5-1 through 5-7? Seeing none, looking for a motion?
How about a slow motion?
Good, that'll work. Mr. Schmidt.
Move to approve consent items 5.1 through 5.7.
Do you have a second? Ms. Ratty.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Smith, seconded by Councilwoman Ratty to approve consent items 5-1 through 5-7. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passage unanimously. Okay, that's it, we go on to general business, we have none, so we're going to take a recess until 3 o'clock.
Redevelopment?
Yeah. Mr. Schmidt.
That was my question, if we could go ahead and get the redevelopment out of the way right now, do we?
Yep. Moving on to redevelopment. Go ahead, Mr. Schmidt.
Okay, I'll call the order, redevelopment agency meeting of Monday, September 27, with the roll call, please.
Sheriff's, yes?
Here.
Agency Secretary Patterson here. Agency members Ratty.
Here.
Salerno.
Here.
Martini.
Here.
Kerrigan, absent. Schmidt.
Here.
Chief Administrative Officer Carey.
Here.
Agency Attorney Adams.
Here.
Okay, public comment, I do not have any cards. Would anybody like to speak at this time? Okay, we'll move on to approval of the agenda, consideration of taking items out of sequence, deleting items and adding items which require action upon a finding that an emergency exists.
Move to approve, Mr. Chair.
I have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes unanimously. Recommendation to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of August 23, 2010. Looking for a motion?
Move to approve, Mr. Chair.
We have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Number four, report of claims and bills approved or payment for August 5 through September the 8. Any questions? Looking for a motion?
Your first.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. Number five, any comments from the agency or Chief Administrative Officer? By golly, by gum, we're adjourned. Okay, we're in recess till 3. Okay, let's call the meeting back to order. Lee, you have a card to speak here, is that under public comment?
Yeah, just basically.
Okay. Well, we've already gone through that because we started at 2, but since you're here, we'll just go ahead and let you come on up and speak as if we were having public comment if there's any problem with the council.
Uh-uh.
Okay. You have three minutes.
What?
Three minutes.
Oh, I read here it's an hour, minimum, an hour.
Yeah.
Anyway, Lee Pazuski, Victorian Square Merchants Group, we want to thank you folks for putting that ad in the Southwest Magazine, or that's going to go in the Southwest Magazine, at least to keep that interest going down there. What we would like to do, since it's under a three-minute format, is invite any of you folks down on October 5, at 10:00 in the morning, to the Blind Onion Pizza. That's our next meeting down there. I believe that we've already kind of contacted the police chief to be down there for that as well. And then from that point on, we'd like to see if we can put together some sort of a public-private partnership to go beyond these major events, so we can do some structuring with us to get involved on smaller events. Some of these things are so huge, little businesses can't get involved. And when you go talk to Hot Dog and Snipes, obviously that's a hot potato now, but when they tell you we need $10,000 for you to participate, it just can't happen. So we're looking to see if we can put together a committee, I know I'm on a few of the other smaller committees, maybe this is a public notice, hopefully not, type scenario, but to where we can get in and we can have, you know, someone representative from the police department, someone from planning, someone from the permitting side, because if we can put that all together before we come forward, it's going to save some time and money. But we're already all agreeing to put in for advertising down there, basically to keep it in Sparks, be local, come down here and see us. So that's kind of our format we're at now, but if we can work on that in the future, whoever you want me to work through, you know, I'll try and do that. It's tough down there, even with Greg across the street, because he's focused on the event, not the creating of the event, so.
Yeah, I think working with Greg would be good, but we can talk to Stan to make sure. Question, how did Street Vibrations go?
Actually, for us, because it was farther away, it was on that far end, but we've already talked to promoter about next year, and he hopes to expand it down there. Of course, always the issue of closing off the street farther, but hopefully that'll work out, and he'll want to get it like a Rip Cook Off scenario.
Okay. Questions, Mr. Schmidt first.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for coming down, we appreciate it, because it's always good to hear from the downtown merchants. Are you aware of the BLT or the Business Leadership Team?
I have heard of it, but not gotten any information on it.
Okay, they're a group that's been sponsored by the Tourism Marketing of the City of Sparks. We're, I think, approaching our third year now of working with tourism and marketing and special events. You have representatives from the Downtown Association that are members of that group, and they're business leaders of the community. We have our staff working with them, all talking about special events, how to create more special events, how to get involvement in them, and we've got, you know, working, there'll be a meeting coming up next month, I've called for a meeting next month to bring back, to go to the next phase of our marketing stuff, and so I think that, you know, you're getting your representatives, your downtown representatives that are on that board to communicate with you guys what's going on and what we're doing, and becoming involved in what they are there will probably be tremendous, because, you know, we've already cut our application process down for the special events on how long the application is, and we're moving into the next phase of actually trying to find other events to come on in there, and, you know, your participation is not only welcome but needed to go ahead and make that type of things happen, because, you know, for, you know, you get several small businesses together that can help support that financially, does a much better job than the city bringing in a little bit of money and trying to do all the work. There's more to it than just, you know, the money end of it, but we appreciate your involvement, and we look forward to bringing the next phase of this project together and start seeing more events on down there.
Now, is that meeting open to anybody who wants to?
You know, anybody can go. The Tourism Marketing Committee, we don't have a set schedule on it, we usually meet, I would say, an average of every two months or something like that. BLT, they sponsor their own schedule, they have public relations people, they're working, you can talk to Beth Cooney over at the Nugget, she's, I think she's the vice chair of that committee with Paul Curtis, the chair of it. They meet with us probably every three months to tell us what's going on. You know, they've been pretty heavily involved, and they've done a lot of work in the last two years in helping to prepare us to move forward with more events.
Can I give someone my email to at least get your meeting?
Sure, just write it down and give it to Linda, she'll, in fact, you can probably put it right on here, it'll be good.
And if you want to, just go ahead, you can email me too, any questions or concerns, and we can get you on the Tourism Marketing Committee's schedule, and I can put you in contact with Mr. Curtis and Ms. Cooney, and make sure that your organization is represented there.
Yeah.
I know they are, but I just want to make sure that your comments or whoever's.
I know Tom's involved with that.
I believe Tom is correct, yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks, Lee, for that, about the Southwest Airlines, that's, who approved that, was the Tourism and Marketing Committee approved that, and I think it's a good step for us, something we haven't ever done before, I think it'll pay dividends. Mr. Schmidt.
Yeah, Lee, thanks for coming down today. Is it a merchants association that you have down there, or is it just?
Basically. Well, it's not formalized, we don't have a president, vice president, it's a group meeting, you know, nobody wants, I get short straw today.
Okay.
But nobody wants to, you know, jump up based on time to say I'll be the president. My sister's kind of taken a little bit of a run at it with the agendas and things like that.
Okay, I'll be out of town next week, but if you'll let me know on your next one, I'd love to go there. I mean, and Ron's right-
I mean, and Ron's right on this BLT and getting everybody involved down there with everything that goes on down there is very important and if you guys are interested, we're interested, that's for sure.
Yeah, we, again, we'd like to work on some smaller events. We were, I mean, the museums come to us and they've talked about Rails and Ales, something that they want to put on and how we can focus it down there. So the main thing is we want to make, keep it simple, keep the cost down, raise revenue, you know, go from there without, you know, having to pay a lot for various costs that are associated with.
Ms. Ratty.
I just wanted some feedback on the traffic pattern for Hot August Nights.
I've heard all positive stuff on that, so I can't complain at all about that.
Good. Okay. Thanks, Lee, for coming down, appreciate it.
Thank you.
You want to put your email address on this and give it to Linda? Okay. Okay, next is a public hearing, second reading and public hearing on Bill Number 2623, amending Chapter 10.40 of the Sparks Municipal Code to simplify, update, and clean up the language of Section 10.40.01 and others thereto. Who's?
This is simply a cleanup of our municipal code.
Questions? Okay, seeing no questions, this is a public hearing, so I'll open it to the public, anyone in the public would like to speak to this particular agenda item. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to council for action. Any questions? Not looking for a motion? Ms. Ratty?
I move that Bill Number 2623 be approved and adopted.
Mr. Smith?
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman Ratty, seconded by Councilman Smith to approve 7.1, any further Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Next is 7.2, public hearing and possible approval of the Consolidated Plan Annual Performance Evaluation Report, CAPR, to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. Tracy Wheeler, welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon, for the record, Tracy Wheeler, Grant Administrator, and I'd like to thank all of you for the recess. Both 7.2 and 7.3 had public comment periods that were 15 days and 30 days respectively and so our advertisements that had to go into the paper actually went in the end of August, beginning of September, so unfortunately we had a little bit of a crisscross there and by delaying this meeting, by delaying this item, you enabled us to save about $1,000 in having to re-advertise, so I really appreciate that and so does the CDBG budget. So on that note, the item in front of you is for the CAPR. I want to briefly just let you know that with our CDBG money this past year, we were able to assist 12 households with emergency repair grants and small loans for repairs to their homes. We also did an additional five homes with the Home Consortium money. The city assisted well over 1,000 individuals via grants to four area nonprofits and finally just shy of $600,000 was committed to doing infrastructure improvements in between 11th Street, Plymouth Way, Rock Boulevard, and Galt. We did new sidewalks, new curb and gutter, and ADA accessibility improvements. And with that, if you have any questions, I hopefully have answers.
Questions for Tracy. Okay, seeing none, this is a public hearing, so I'll open the public hearing. Anyone in the audience like to speak to this particular agenda item? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing, bring it back to council for action or questions. No questions, looking for a motion? Ms. Ratty?
I move to approve some of the Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report for Program Year 2009 for the City of Sparks to HUD.
Do you have a second? It's been moved by Councilwoman Ratty, seconded by Councilman Smith to approve Agenda Item 7.2, the Annual Performance and Evaluation Report. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Okay, 7.3, public hearing, consideration of possible approval of an amendment to the Fiscal Year 2010 Action Plan to expand the pedestrian improvement activity project scope. Tracy Wheeler.
Again, for the record, Tracy Wheeler, Grant Administrator. In May, you all reviewed and approved our annual action plan for fiscal year 2010, 2011, which has program year 2010. In that action plan, we allocated a little over $401,000 towards a pedestrian improvement project. It's leveraging dollars that we're using with N.Dot stewardship funds. In discussion with our Public Works folks, it turns out we have more than sufficient dollars to do our sidewalk improvements. However, one of our biggest obstacles are the utility poles that are located along the north side of Prater Way, particularly in between View Street and 22nd. This amendment will allow us to utilize the CDBG dollars towards undergrounding some of those utility lines and that is the only change. There are no dollar changes, it's just a minor change in scope. I've spoken with our HUD representative and this falls within our scope and our liability, so with this, your approval on this will allow us to get rocking and rolling on the project.
Okay, questions for Tracy? Okay, seeing none, this is a public hearing. Anyone in the audience like to speak to this particular item? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing, bring it back to council for action or questions. Questions? No questions, looking for a motion? Mr. Smith?
Move to approve PY 2010 Community Development Block Grant Action Plan Amendment as presented by staff.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Moved by Councilman Smith, seconded by Councilman Salerno. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Thanks Tracy. Okay, next is comments from council or city manager?
Yes.
Okay, seeing no further business, we're adjourned.